We can flip. Hey guys, real quick. So before we go in and get started, I'm gonna just leave this live. I just want to grab your attention. Saturday is the fourteenth. It starts at two. The Reefs Across America is all combined this year. So I'm gonna show up again. Obviously, I did that last year and I really enjoyed it. So if you don't have plans, if you were here for it last year and the year before, it's a great memorial. But they're doing it over at the Veterans Memorial instead of at Powers Cemetery. So I wanted to let you guys know about that. I'll share this after the meeting. Well, I can share it right now. Cause I'm gonna come down for that. It doesn't mean don't come, obviously. Show up, but... There's that. Alright, that's shared. I haven't had a chance to ask for the fire department contract yet. Not too big of a deal. I do hope there's copies of the ordinance when we get in there. And I want to take a second to clarify. Great traction, so thank you everybody for watching, you know, the meeting for December, which was on the second. Analytics say they were great. What I'm concerned about is that... I left mine in the car. What I'm concerned about is who people think that like we're upset about. So I do want to take a second to clarify and remind you guys to try to remember that in a public forum, we don't want to share too much personal information, you know, about what's going on in people's lives or births, things like that. Everybody's already really in the public eye, so just be mindful, you know, when you're commenting on videos. So be respectful. I try to keep it an open forum where everybody feels comfortable. But I want to make it clear that the issue with Penny, people seem to think that we have an issue directly with Penny, and it's not. We're not going after Penny. The problem is that the council members aren't accurately relaying information about Penny. So I don't want people to think that we're, you know, pitchforking Penny personally, because that's not it at all. So I just want you guys to keep in mind, keep your discourse as respectful and polite as you can. I certainly can appreciate, you know, sharing your thoughts and the comments. It all does really good for the algorithm. But keep in mind that what, you know, what we're upset about as viewers for, you know, the constituents of the borough is again transparency. And a majority election is coming up. So always keep in mind, you know, that your voice certainly can be heard. Give us the light. And it's important to make sure that you're registered to vote. We have some time. You're gonna see some content come out. You know, things that we've seen over time, things that we're watching change over time. This meeting tonight, I've been to lots of special pop-up, what I would call a special pop-up meeting, because people just weren't notified. The general public wasn't notified. I don't have a lot of details about what's going on tonight. It was supposed to just be accepting the fire department contract, but it looks like they're changing the rate on the millage forms, which is gonna directly affect your taxes. And I don't know what the increase or rate's gonna be for the water meters, but that's on the agenda tonight too. So we're gonna find that out. I'm gonna go in and take my seat. I'm hoping that I get to see everybody. I don't know that I always make the best choices where to sit, but um... So I'm not gonna show up, cause there's a car in it right now. The lake is really dangerous, so if you haven't come over here yet and you intend to, please at least avoid driving and walking through it. It's a lot deeper than it looks. And, you know, we've talked about this in the past, but I don't want to put anybody's cars on camera, and certainly not plates. So that's a, that's a thing, but we're gonna go in and be quiet, cause I don't want to restart the stream. But I wanted to talk to you guys about the Reefs Across America. Whooping that that's all done. Thanks, guys. And that that's all done and ready for Saturday.
You did?
Lots of people use it and don't even ask.
I'm not sitting in the front. What if I'm gonna film you? I might. You never know.
Well, I was just talking about your Reefs Across America. Do you want to talk about it? Just make noise. I'm live. No, not yet. Want to do it after? You're fine. Let's see. Okay. I just told everybody about it. And I'll be here too.
The reeves were delivered today.
Today. They're all set, right? You're good to go?
She told me that's where we were ourselves.
I don't find a problem.
What are you doing here, Dan?
What?
What are you doing here?
Um, having a meeting.
Been a while since you've been in one of these things.
I'm gonna be a proud of more being president.
Oh, wow. Why are you present?
Right now.
Until what, January, no?
So next Tuesday, next Monday, you'll see what happens.
Think you handed out too many there?
No, I copy sent.
Well, there's nobody sitting here.
I mean, hold on to it. I'm gonna call them.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. They haven't really sent it.
I checked it out there. I think it's gonna be better than... Waiting for the dub release, like at the end of the ceremony. They hurried back in October, and when I followed up on it just two days ago, no response. Makes me nervous, so I'm hoping up calls will get in tomorrow just to see.
I know somebody's got pigeons. They're calling pigeons, we should let them loose and...
Twice one day.
What's that?
We could see you twice one day.
Yeah, I know what.
I'm gonna look at somebody. I don't wanna look at it.
It's not looking at you. It's just a speaker.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at it while I'm on the phone.
Maybe she might not be able to hear everybody.
Get a speaker on, I guess. Call to order. Alrights. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No.
Oh, you do got it.
I have it.
Okay.
But I wanted to, he sent me one of the other thing, and I just did. I wanted to do the two ninety-nine. I haven't gotten that yet.
Alright, we're gonna do roll call. Cindy Burrows?
Yes.
Terry Gleason?
Yep.
Eddie Wetzel?
Yep.
Um, Mansell Odell, President. And we have Robert Penzone is absent. And Barry Mortimer is absent. Non-President. Alright, public comment on agenda items. Alright, we got no public comment on agenda items. Going on to new business. We have the fire department contract. Everyone has the fire department contract. So if you looked at it, change they have is to, from last year, Mr. Mills has changed point five. So I'll take a motion to accept the fire department contract, but I have discussions. If you have discussions, save now. No one's time to discuss it.
I make a motion that we accept the contract as presented for twenty twenty-five.
Second that. Okay, Terry Gleason made a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five fire department contract, seconded by Mansell Odell. Roll call vote. Cindy Burrows?
Yes.
Terry Gleason?
Yes.
Eddie Wetzel?
Yes.
Mansell Odell?
Yes.
Um, I myself is yes. Robert Penzone and Barry Mortimer absent. It's five zero, five two, five zero zero. Alright, the next thing on the docket here is the ordinance, number twenty-four dash two, millage rate increase to advertise. Make a motion to ordinance twenty-four two, millage rate increase to advertise.
Can you be specific about what period?
So we have our discussions before we do that. Any discussions on this? So I have discussions. Since we're going to point five, which will raise the millage increase, and we just raised the water and sewer, which will actually, both will increase, water and sewer will increase and the tax will increase. My suggestion would be to reduce that, that increase to make up for this.
Reduce what? The water and sewer?
Yep. This way, this won't increase. This way our millage will stay the same for the entire borough. Yeah, but we're not getting any of the millage. Most of that goes to the fire department. Right, but once you do that, the millage, the millage will increase. Once, once we accept this, the millage will increase. Right. Plus our water and sewer.
But the reason for the water and sewer increase is because we have no money to come in to the water and sewer.
Right, but now, but now...
The millage is basically just...
So now, so now the...
Right, the millage is basically just paying for a fire department contract.
Right, but our budget is now off by doing this.
It's not off by that much.
It, it's still off.
I mean...
You don't gotta be exact.
Cause you're looking at point five, and that's what the fire department wants. So if you look at it the way I'm looking at it, the millage would be basically the same except for the fact that they need it for their contract.
I see no reason for it. I see, I don't see any problem with point five. I see no problem with point five, but that will increase the millage.
Right.
Right. Instead of increasing the millage, we can reduce our water and sewer rate.
So we're gonna go back to fifty-seven fifteen?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying whatever the point five is to make up for that. Cause I don't know those numbers. It says it was two thousand something dollars.
It's like twenty, between twenty-five hundred and three thousand dollars.
Right. But that will change our budget. Not that. It won't be that far off.
No.
It's still saying that much, but it will make changes to our budget.
Okay, so what do you want to do with the water and sewer? I mean, we're just gonna sit here and wait until the millage goes into effect?
My suggestion, my suggestion would be to split it in half.
But the water and sewer is a whole different department than...
The borough.
The borough.
Right.
This you're talking borough and fire department. That's, and the water and sewer is a whole different...
Correct. The millage is going to help with the, help with the budget for next year, plus it's gonna help with the contract for the fire department. The, the rate increase for the water and sewer is gonna help the water and sewer department. It's not gonna help with what we need to benefit the town that we're in right now, the borough.
I'd rather raise it a touch this year than a whole lot next year.
Exactly.
Because they're, if things go the way they are, they're gonna want more money again.
Right, and then we're gonna have to raise the millage again next year, and then we're gonna have to raise it again the following year. I mean, we, we have to be the lowest income for millage in any of the borough that is in this area, in Tioga County. We're still at four and a half percent. That's gonna raise it to five. You know how much older boroughs are getting right now? They're getting anywhere between seven and twelve for the millage.
We've not raised things in the past. We've not raised...
No, we haven't raised anything in probably six or seven years.
And now all of a sudden, you're gonna hit them with a big one, and I know I'm not gonna like it.
No. You do a half percent this year, maybe a half percent next year, but you know, it also depends on what the contract next year will be.
There's, there's a town downstate I was telling Mansell about. They didn't raise any taxes in ten years. Everything stayed. Where you have inflation and homes going up and everything else. They raised their, their, by twenty-three point eight percent in one shot. One shot, twenty-three point eight percent. People are going nuts. I'm not about even to do five percent to somebody here.
No, I... I say, with the way the situation we're in right now with the budget and all, we should be close to seven, and we're not even near that. And we're only asking for five right now.
What did, what did they figure it out? How many, how much per household was it? For, for person?
Seven fifty per household. Much? Seven fifty.
Yeah, let's pay almost cents on a thousand. Whatever your assessed value is, fifty cents on times that, to the fire department. So, okay, even worst case, it's seven, it's ten dollars.
Right.
Yeah. I, I make a motion just to, as a sure, to increase a half a mil. Alright. Mansell Odell makes a motion to increase, to accept the twenty-four two ordinance.
I'll second your motion.
It's not to accept it, it's to advertise it.
To advertise the, you have to advertise the twenty-four ordinance. Eddie Wetzel seconds. Roll call vote. Cindy Burrows?
Yes.
Terry Gleason?
Yes.
Eddie Wetzel?
Yes.
Mansell Odell?
Yes.
And yes to myself, two absent, five zero zero. Next item is water sewer meter charge. This was a, people are, for people that have water that are shut off, some of them are not getting charged water and sewer rates, just the water and sewer fees, maintenance fees.
If it's shut off.
If it's shut off, yes.
Not by us, like they shut it off for one reason or another.
Right. And normally, in certain boroughs, I know for sure, that you do get, even if the water's shut off, you still get charged for your maintenance fees.
For having a meter.
For having a meter, yes. You get charged for maintenance, right? You still, right, you still get charged for maintenance fees.
Yep.
So we don't, I want to make sure everybody's...
So this water, water sewer meter charges is going to be the minimum charge that we charge for water?
No.
Or it's gonna be a different charge?
No, just the maintenance fees.
Maintenance fee, well, that's...
So it shouldn't, it shouldn't say meter charge, say maintenance fees. Right.
For maintenance fees, so they'll still get charged to fifty or sixty-seven fifteen?
No, it was not hooked up.
No.
So even if they have a meter and the water's shut off, they'll still have to pay the water maintenance fees? They have to pay the maintenance fee, but not the minimum, cause there's no water there.
Okay.
How about if you charge for meter and don't have a...
If you charge for a meter and don't have a meter?
A second meter. Well, cause you're billed for two dwellings. So Lucy, so what Lucy's asking is like the multiple unit dwellings, where they pay two minimums for having two units, but they have one, one meter?
One meter. It'll still be the same, so it'll still be the same, even if you don't, as long as you have a meter, you'll get charged just maintenance fees.
For that one meter.
For that one meter.
They can call the meter, then they don't have to pay.
Exactly, that'd be exactly the same thing, yes.
I'm charged double.
You charge double for having two meters or one?
I have one meter. I have two, two tenants, two, whatever. I pay two times fifty-seven fifteen.
Cause Georgia says whether it's one meter, like two dwellings, or three dwellings, or four dwellings, everybody gets paid because they're different families on there. It's fifty-seven and fifteen cents or fourteen cents. That's why it reads.
Yeah, it's per dwelling.
Per dwelling, right.
Per dwelling. Whether there's somebody there or not.
If it's shut off.
Whether there's somebody there or not?
This is only if no water is going through the meter.
Yeah, she only has one.
No, if you've got dwellings empty, there's nobody there. You, yeah, you have to, this is shut off. This is everyone not paying the same rate for being shut off. Some people are paying nothing. Some people are paying something.
Right, so we're just gonna charge them the ten dollars?
The maintenance, yeah, that's all this one is, just a maintenance fee for shut-off meters. Can we not clarify that, just waiting for...
I know, that's what I was wondering, cause I mean, you know, I mean, so you're charging ten dollars a month?
That's the maintenance fee.
Or the maintenance standard?
You just put water and sewer maintenance fee only if there's no water, instead of using that meter charge. Cause really not meter charge, it's maintenance each other. But a double dwelling's kinda sorta per meter, those.
Yeah.
If they have one meter shut off, one meter, yeah, one meter shut off, then you have to, you wouldn't have any water, so. Yeah, you still, you still got the water, sewer maintenance. What's that?
Does that be the same situation that has windows in? For one meter with some reasons?
Yeah. You got five units, right?
Yeah. There's one, there's one meter and then they have five units.
Right.
So they're... Right, but the, the unit number is five, so they're being, the maintenance is five times, right?
Yeah, just like the other building.
Yeah. But they're not built, that's not how it's built. Because the maintenance is built five times. And then whatever usage goes through that is built.
Right.
Not each, each is not paying fifty-seven fifteen.
Each house will be?
It should be. It's not.
Every dwelling pays a minimum.
The, the maintenance is the one that's being charged, but times five. And then the rest of it is underneath the fifteen hundred gallons, and then it comes, then it gives them the extra.
They both should be managed. You're right. Cause they both gotta be doing it.
That's not how it's, that's our notice of disis, and that's not how I was reading that.
That's why they haven't been doing a meeting, not because they ain't getting charged. Listen, each dwelling where different families are living is the minimum charge and the maintenance fee. So it'd be fifty-seven and fourteen?
Yeah, that's not how, that's not how it's set up.
Well, that's why...
Yeah, we gotta fix that.
Because that's even like Brownie with his little motel down there. He has, he has one meter, plus he has six units.
That's fifty-seven.
He's being charged the maintenance six times, and then whatever usage he uses.
He should be charged.
That's sixty dollars. Yeah, no wonder nobody's showing up.
Fifty, I thought we explained it. Fifty-seven to change. Every dwelling that has...
That's the minimum.
Every dwelling.
No, I understand that.
Different family members.
You're just gonna have to figure out how to get that to reflect in the system, cause that's not how it's reflecting.
That's why it should be.
Sounds like you should check Lucy's account, cause hers isn't building that way.
Cause the computer system only detects one.
No, they got, there's five units on, on Haslins, and on Brown's are six. It shows six in there. It used to, but it's not all refilling like that.
It used to be fifty-seven, some change years ago. I don't know what happened to the system. I don't know. That's why it should be.
I can check into those, but I can tell that's not how it reads.
I wonder they're not arguing anymore.
That's why they're not here, when I told you.
And see, I don't think that's fair.
I...
No, it isn't.
What's not fair?
The fact that I'm paying for two, and they get about four free or something?
Well, no, they, they should be paying. I agree. Well, that's what we're gonna... So that's what we discussed, to make sure everybody's either being the same... I thought everybody was on the same page. Or the same, apparently we're not. So we don't have to worry about things are... You're right, it's not fair to you.
Same for everybody, whatever it is.
Right. So that's what, that's what we gotta decide, same for everybody. Right, I don't, I don't know if this is a motion to do this, but...
Yeah, for what? I charge. I get a motion for that.
Jen, I'll take a motion to... Clarify the ordinance? No, no.
For maintenance.
Just for a square meter, right?
Okay. So I'll take a motion to amend... What's that?
No.
No, no, we're not, we're not...
No, we're still working on the maintenance fee.
To keep the maintenance fees the same for everyone, so...
Yes. So if the water's shut off, you still get charged a water meter charge?
Yep, that's what this is. She says the water's shut off. So you said, make a motion to, what's the motion that you made? Motion to...
Charge ten dollars per meter.
Maintenance fee for anybody that's hooked up to the system, whether there's a meter there or not. Anybody lives there, any dwelling?
That's the way it works, that's the way, yeah.
So the motion is to make everyone... The maintenance fee. Maintenance fee for everyone will be the same. Regardless. Regardless. So the motion is, Mansell Odell makes a motion to keep the, make the maintenance fee the same for all individuals that has meters. Right.
Right.
This is per meter, not per dwelling?
It's, no, it's per meter.
It's, no, it's per meter.
Per.
Per.
I gotta clarify, sorry.
Really, no, it's not right, yeah.
Right.
I was not trying to trick you out.
Per dwelling.
So this is, this is a shut off, so this is a shut off, so when the meter's shut, or actually clear that, we should make clear that motion.
It's not, it's the property owners are calling to have them shut off.
They want to shut the water.
They want the water shut off, I'll use example, Chilton Wilcox.
Okay.
That's off.
Okay.
He still has his meter.
Yep.
Okay, and so then he would be paying that ten dollars a month for keeping that meter until he's ready to, one, remove it, or two, hook it back up.
Right, he's got water running to the building, it's ready and available, it's ready and available.
Well, it's, it's all. Yeah, it's ready and available.
This maintenance fee has to do with the water and sewer.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with anything else.
Yep, nope.
Correct.
So that's the example.
Yep.
So it's to do with whatever meter.
Oh, we don't get into the meter.
Shut off meters. Alright, so let's make this clearer here, so we write it down, so. So Mansell Odell makes a motion for all water shut offs, maintenance fees will apply. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Cindy Burrows. One more time discussion. If not, roll call vote, Cindy Burrows.
Yes.
Terry Gleason.
Yes.
Eddie Wetzel.
Yes.
Mansell Odell.
Yes.
I myself is yes, and two absent, Robert Penzone and Barry Mortimer. Alright, I will now take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion adjourned.
Mansell Odell makes a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask for clarification one more time, so people like this, that don't like Mr. Chilton, like she said, the Wilcox building there, if they don't have an open account, do they have to come down in order to set that up, should they come to the office and set that up?
They already have accounts.
They all already have accounts?
They better have accounts, or we're doing something wrong.
Hypothetically.
Okay, if you need any more, I'll help, just go to the secretary Friday, she might be able to help, she will be.
Friday?
Yeah, it's back on Friday, um motion to adjourn was um motion by Mansell Odell, seconded by Eddie Wetzel, roll call votes, Cindy Burrows, Terry Gleason, Eddie Wetzel, Mansell Odell. I myself is yes, two absent, adjourned. The next meeting's the morning six.
No.
You could sign up, but Brad's gotta sign up too.
Friday has to be.
Brad, stop over time at any time.
Monday the thirty, and Friday the twenty seventh, your primary is.
Friday the twenty seventh.
You do? Either. You know who I am?
I just didn't know. I don't even know if we're here the thirtieth, so I'm guessing.
Okay.
You're voting, you have to keep bringing up.
The thirtieth is a Monday, you have to have a.
Will we just call one?
Well, maybe you get it in the.
I'm gonna put it in right now before I clock out, I'll call one more, I am that.
Yes.
I'm whitey.
Yeah, I'm calling more.
When's the twenty seventh?
So.
Friday, right now, Friday, yeah, the last Friday of the month. I know, but I put you here, I know.
If anything, I'll call.
It's going in, it's go three days.
I'll call you. So if you go in. I'll be in it.
And gotta wait for ten days left.
Alright. Skate love.
I don't care.
No, my dad's up there, I'm gonna come back. Let's go to twenty seventh, we'll call in, if anything happens, I'll very.
As long as we have, we don't have that window.
I will advertise the twenty seventh.
As long as we have a call, we're on. As long as we have a call, you can have it to your idea.
I'll have to go back and listen to that for you guys, whoever just caught that, they're scheduling the next meeting, which is cool, a heads up, more than a couple hours would be great. Uh, so real quick, I know that was like nice and short, real quick, guys, um. Uh skip public comment tonight completely, which is fine, um it didn't, I don't think I would've got any great answers um to my questions, which obviously, uh if these are for shut off accounts, um and you don't have an account open, I have to imagine this is gonna happen to someone, obviously you need to stop down to the office, uh they said on Friday, and come down and get that set up, so you wanna make sure that if you are not using borough water supply, um that you're prepared to pay to have the meter, or prepared to pay to have the meter removed. So, again, um if you are any of these people in that situation, I highly recommend that you come down, talk to the secretary, um see what the ordeal is. What we found out tonight is that the ordinance is still not being followed by cost per dwelling, and some residents are paying per dwelling, even though there's one meter, um there's two in one, and five in another, and some are being charged for it, and some aren't being charged for it. So it leads me to question again in belief, like I don't want anybody to think it's personal, it's not personal against Penny, but the fact that we can't get any answers for questions that we have about Penny, along with the discussion about the budget, and an actual versus budget for the year still has not been presented, but I wasn't offered an opportunity to ask about that. Tonight, it's a special meeting, it's supposed to be very specific, um I was not invited to the budget meeting, I still don't have a copy of the budget, I'm gonna see if I can get it emailed to me, I'd like to look at it. Um but what they did tonight was increase the millage, it's gonna make your taxes go up, um you guys are looking at um thirteen, about thirteen more dollars a month on your water bill, um with no expectation of change of quality, I have seen some posts lately about people having some brown colored water, that's really not abnormal, but they haven't been doing the hydrant flushing. We know that to be a fact, because they have to advertise, it'll be on your water bill, so keep an eye out for that too, um those things just aren't being done, the negligence in the borough has stayed uh the same. And what I'm also noticing is they're taking some lessons from content that I have filmed previously on how to handle the public, um and us as guests and speakers. So I think that it's rude to try to circumvent the public, um I expected a couple more people here tonight, but that's okay, I see you guys on the stream, so thank you very much, you know, at least for showing up. As always, you know, if you guys wanna support or you find value in what I do, just commenting, sharing, uh liking the video, all that stuff really counts, so I, it means a lot to me to know that you guys are still engaged, I mean, I'm still driving out here, two years later, this is the most thankless thing I think I've ever done in my life, but I can't stop. So I think you guys deserve the information, uh the animosity sometimes makes it hard to come to meetings, and I get that, and I get that some people don't wanna be filmed. I guess it depends on how much you care about it, so I still care, I don't live here, I don't drink the water, I don't even eat here, Annie's is gone, I've been into the dollar store once. Um I think uh food over at the Dandy would be great, so keep an eye out, that's supposed to be opening up, there shouldn't be an issue with the water there, because it hasn't been shut off long enough, Dandy just kinda like, poops, skip town. So uh keep an eye out for those things, um the grocery, Dollar General, they're supposed to put in, um I think we're the one that just moved out and closed first, so. Keep an eye out for that, if you guys have any details about that, please comment, like opening days or hours, um what people can expect, that'd be great, so I'm always looking forward to that kind of information. And the C businesses come back to Lawrenceville, um everything here's kinda turned corporate, and I think it's disgusting, so support your small business and do the things, right? Check on your neighbor, think of Etrin, we'll see you Saturday, alright.